Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
Present.
Flores, Kael.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Tobias.
All right, next up is the comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any item? Seeing none, it's now closed. I don't have it yet, so I don't know if I'll be able to... I assume you're ready, Scott.
All right, good morning, council. So we... This is our third budget workshop, and hopefully we are all professionals by now with the proposed FY '22 budget. On the slides, you have a full packet in front of you. We've got some slides here online. What we decided to do, because there were very few changes made at the end of the last budget workshop, is we compiled those changes into a slide, which is Slide 3. And my intention this morning is to just go through these changes. Everything else is the same from the last workshop. We did send out earlier the estimated tax roll, but it is not final, so we are not yet ready for the tax rate conversation. That will be at Budget Workshop number four. With that said, again, Slide 3 is the sum total of the changes that we discussed at the last meeting. I do know that from the last meeting to this, there have been several conversations about proposed changes in or forthcoming in this meeting. So we are, I believe, prepared to discuss some of those also. Let me hit bullet number one and just go down Slide 3. So Budget Workshop held June 26th, Budget Workshop 2, I should say. The next bullet here are the changes that were proposed as follows. So in the budget, we have added $100,000 for the city's contribution for the senior center project. Now, I'm just going to kind of pause and give a little update on each one of these. The senior or CAS, I should say, the Kyle Area Senior Zone Task Force met with CAS this week, went over the plans for the new building as proposed by Steve Baker, who's a member of CAS and an architect. He did send a proposal in as we... After we looked at the plans, said that these plans look good, make sure that CAS is all for the design. He sent a proposal in for the design services to take those plans all the way to 100% CD or construction documents. And that proposal was roughly 7% of total building cost. Based on the square footage and the going rate of buildings or facilities right now, we're looking at roughly a $10 million facility for what they're proposing on those five acres. So again, about 7% of that puts, you know, $700,000 into question, and where are we going to come up with that? At the last Budget Workshop and prior, we have talked about the city splitting that cost with the county and with CAS as well. So I think we can probably negotiate, and as the design goes into the construction documents, it's probably going to take a little longer than this next fiscal year. So what I would propose to councils is that we look at increasing that $100,000 to $200,000. That will put the onus again back on the Kyle Area Senior Zone to raise the additional funds themselves, as well as to go to Hayes County and get that other third. And that doesn't preclude us from going toward state and federal sources to look for additional funds, which we will do now with the addition of our federal August. That's number one. Questions? Okay. Number two, added $78,432 for a senior planner position in the Community Development Department. Again, that was a proposal recommendation made during the last workshop, so we went forward and added that as well. Number three, added $12,610 to change the parks crew leader position to a parks and trails maintenance supervisor. Item four, added $130,000 for outdoor fitness court, the CIP for that court from the parks and rec department. And there is an associated offsetting revenue, so that future PID reimbursement from the workplace development is our associated offsetting revenue for that item. Item five, we added to the utility, the wastewater utility, $2.1 million for sludge dewatering press system for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. This one is a pretty hefty item. We are currently in a position with our sludge, our press and hauler, who is the same company right now. They are imminently going to be wrapping up services for the city because of some force majeure issues that they are claiming. And we are actively trying to solicit another provider for our press and haul. With that, the cost is increasing quite a bit in the press and haul. As we look at outsourcing, continuing to outsource that, the cost is growing to where it makes sense just to add our own press and then provide hauling through TDS, basically, until we get our own haul truck and haul person. So this $2.1 million adds a larger, I think it's a three-meter press, which is a larger press, allows us to press more sludge at the wastewater treatment plant and reduce the amount of time an operator would actually need to be at the press. This would be the press, and then in future budget years, we'd come back probably for an additional operator position at the wastewater treatment plant. Utilizing additional funds within the current wastewater treatment plant bond helps us bring the cost of that press down. It's actually about $3.5 million, so this is the remainder. There is some contingency that we can perhaps use, depending on how the project continues to progress toward completion, but this would get us comfortably to adding that three-meter press without the contingency.
I've seen that press. I don't like presses. I mean, I'm like, what?
That was impressive.
It was... It was really bad.
Did you say it was impressive?
Yeah, and she said she was not impressed. I was like, that is fantastic.
It was like, I was like, yeah, first thought, yeah, I was like, into the process. And so me and Dick took Cory, I remember, and he was telling me, and I was like, that's disgusting. But she was like, so old. And I was like, yeah, that, like, that's disgusting. So, yeah, I think it's a, it's a absolutely...
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Yes, that is correct. It's one of those issues you don't really like to talk about when you know what it does, but we'll just call it a three-meter press. Okay, item six is $415,000 for site-specific beautification improvement projects. These are the CIP items from the WLE proposal from the first time we brought forward the WLE contract. We basically put a bunch of maintenance in there just to get our beautification started. This is taking basically Phase 2 of the beautification plan and starting to add CIP elements to that. Those CIP elements... James, you want to talk about the several elements that are being proposed?
So effectively, everything that came into the WLE contract for last year, whenever we originally accepted that contract, there was a laundry list of CIP improvements that were in their original bid for their two-year contract. So the first year, we only did maintenance and operations with WLE. This year, we proposed to include all of the CIPs that WLE had originally proposed, which includes things such as installing irrigation in the medians of 1626 Kyle Parkway, installing trees, crepe myrtles. And they do... They did have some plans for the Burleson Roundabout, but Public Works also has like a sign that they're working on, you know, some monumentation in the middle. So those two things would go together, but it's not only just putting in trees and things to make things more beautiful, but it's also boring underneath Kyle Parkway to bring water across, putting in the sleeves, putting in the irrigation, fixing all the irrigation that's on Kyle Parkway east of 35, so that whole stretch that goes all the way up to Seton. It's those types of projects. So those are all listed out in the WLE contract. They're already bid. We've already accepted their contracts. All we have to do is now just fund those projects. And then the last bit that I know would be of interest is, once we authorize those expenditures, like, when can they deliver? And they're actually putting together their schedule for me right now to build a share out, just to say exactly when it would deliver.
So is this a one-time?
It's a one-time expense, yeah. You'll have the ongoing maintenance, which will be increased because we will be adding things that they're not currently maintaining, but all of their improvement corridors are corridors that they already maintain and take care of. So the increases should be incremental. It should be like, now we need more chemicals for trees, or now we need more chemicals for this, or now we need more mulch, you know? Those types of incremental increases versus, you know, like maybe the cost of mobilizing a crew to go to a different area that they've never gone to before, so.
So the 415 basically brings that CIP item up. We still have beautification monies for like the gateway sign that we've been discussing and, you know, some smaller beautification-type upgrades. But WLE, CIP, and maintenance is kind of part of that bigger beautification bucket that is...
Well, basically, what it is, is by the time you account for the WLE ongoing maintenance plus the CIPs plus the, like, the entry monument signage for Center Street and plus the lighting of the signs and the lighting of the bridges, that 415 is the delta difference over the $500,000 that we started with, plus the whole laundry list of things that we want to make sure got done this year. So that's the 415 delta.
Can you come up gateway signage?
Yeah.
You're not including the four points with the newer signs that we have at our entrances?
Right.
Do we have budgeted within this budget to take care of the rest of those signs?
Correct, within the...
For the LED lights?
Yes.
Yes.
Gotcha. Shout out to that great presentation by Mayor Portem at this Day of the City. I know it was tough probably to hear that, but that is, I think he said it well, that's how you go from good to great and not settling, so.
Yeah, we're...
Excited to see that, what it looks like over there, all three, all four.
Those... The parts, the drivers for those LED lights are on order. We hope to have them in the next couple of weeks, and then he's ready to go out and change those out, the other signs. Okay, item seven, $20,000 for consultant services in the Economic Development Department. Again, we had discussed this at the last meeting. This is to bring back the Catalyst commercial contract, and this will help us set a new strategy and new plan for the next year. Number eight, added $20,000 for DPS laboratory services in the Police Department. This was kind of a newer expense that we just weren't anticipating. Jeff, do you want to mention what that is?
I sure can. Good morning, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. The District Attorney's Office wanted to expedite the drug-related cases that they're prosecuting, and the typical lab without these services is about 18 months out, so it takes a long time for them to get cases processed because they're waiting on the laboratory to process the drugs and confirm what it was and the weight and such. So the Hayes County Sheriff's Office and the District Attorney's Office is asking all the partners in the county to cost share in a DPS laboratory technician, and that person will work solely on Hayes County cases. So we will take... We will deliver those drugs to the DPS lab, and that dedicated person to Hayes County will get those drug analysis reports right back to Hayes County in a timely manner. It's weeks in terms of 18 months, and that will in turn keep people out of the Hayes County jail and let them relieve some of their prisoner population. And that's our cost share that you see in there.
And this is a large part, what happens because of the changes in the legislature on things like, I'm sure it's obviously it's all drugs, but marijuana is a large one of that, and getting back if it is actually marijuana as opposed to some other substance and things like that.
It could be, sir. However, the, I'm going to say 95% or more of this is your felony drugs, cocaine, meth, maybe some prescription pills that they need analysis. Very seldom does the District Attorney's Office end up needing the analysis on the marijuana because they kind of either plead those cases out in other ways or whatnot, but for the most part, this is your felony drug-related cases, like meth, powder cocaine and such.
Ah, yes, sir. So, yeah, so you're saying it's taken 18 months sometimes on...
Yes, sir. If we used the regular state lab, DPS lab without a dedicated technician, that's about what it's taken to get those reports back.
Everybody in the state.
They're so far behind. Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Can you explain a little bit, elaborate a little bit more about how that, certainly for our audience watching too, how that helps remedy a little bit on the jail side of moving people through that a little bit faster and decrowding that?
Absolutely. So there's two excellent benefits of us participating in this program with the county and the other agencies. Number one, that helps move the cases through the process much faster if they have that court analysis. And in many cases, since we're talking felonies, sometimes those individuals have to sit in the county jail until their case is heard. And that can be months and months. Obviously, that's at taxpayer expense while we take care of them in the jail system. And the faster our prosecutors can get the analysis back and then work with that defense attorney and that individual accused to remedy that case, however they're going to do it. So it just speeds it along. There is a secondary benefit as well. Our county is held to a standard from the state for funding based on the completion of your court cases, and you're not supposed to let those sit out there too long. You're supposed to have a clearance rate basically from the court system, and it doesn't mean finding everybody guilty or whatever, but you're supposed to have your cases processed in a timely manner. And when the court system gets backed up, that can hamper the cities and the county getting funds from the state because they give them a timeframe and a clearance rate that they're expected to uphold. The reason why, well, due to COVID, they got a one-year reprieve, but we're now, we've been told by the state, we're back on track and the expectations are there again, so it'll help move that as well.
Fantastic. And just to clarify too, because I know we got the email, but obviously for the audience as well, this is to fund a position, and then the cost breakdown was a percentage of overall cases that we've sent to the county over the past year, or could you refresh my memory on that breakdown?
Yes, sir. I believe they're going to do a population-based, and then they're also taking into account, since this is a new program, so they're going to try to find an equitable way to cost share that out each year. Another good thing that the District Attorney's going to do is seek restitution in court cases if the judge will allow, and that will reduce our overall cost. This is year one, so they couldn't estimate those numbers very well, but they're going to take care of that this year, or for next year, and hopefully we'll see a reduction even in our cost sharing.
And sorry, final question. How many jurisdictions are participating in this cost share?
They've asked for all of the city municipal police departments, so that would be San Marcos, Kyle, and Buta, and then the Hayes County Sheriff's Office, and they would cover their constables offices and such. And then, I can't remember, I'm pretty sure Texas State was included in that. I just don't remember seeing them on that. I'm pretty sure they were, so. So it'll be each of the entity, each of the law enforcement agencies, and Hayes County covering the constables and the others.
Okay, thank you. Finally, number eight, or number nine, I apologize, is $5,280 for a 4% colocation cost increase in the Police Department. That's a number we just received from Hayes County. We do have a small increase also for animal control that we talked about last time, but we're not sure how final that number is yet either, so. County, San Marcos, you know, we're still finalizing what those costs are, but we were told to plan for 4% increase for the colocation services. That includes everything that was discussed at the last meeting.
Scott, what are we paying now at the colocation?
Give us one second. We'll look that up for you.
So 4% of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, the remainder of the presentation was the same as last time, so what we thought we would do, if you're comfortable with it, is just go straight to some of the council requests or any discussion, additional discussion on these items, and happy to answer questions for you. After this conversation, we'll jump into item two on the agenda, which is the resolution that will have a little bit of a tax rate component to it, and we'll have Prevez talk about that as well. So this is your opportunity to share your thoughts and ask questions of staff.
So at the last meeting, it was brought up that Scott needed help, and Kael and Bradshaw kind of led that discussion, and that was probably the thing I took away most from the last one, is really thinking about how much time Scott puts into this job. And it's obvious, I think, to everybody that he needs more help. And so we were talking about assistance and what we could do to provide that help so that we could run more efficiently. So I asked him what he thought he truly needed to keep pushing the city forward, and from an assistant level. And the idea of a second assistant city manager position came up to be able to relieve him of a lot of his duties so he can spend more time doing the other things we need him to do. So I asked him to look into that and how that might lay out in the format and the work structure of the city. And so Scott, I know you've prepared a couple of things to talk about in regards to that, but it's my hope that we just get him the help that he needs so that we can, you know, just be as efficient as possible, thinking about the future when we add FTEs and kind of go from there. So, Scott.
We have the time to be humble.
This one, I mean, it is a time to be humble, but thank you for that consideration, and thanks all the council for, you know, noticing. It's definitely another thing that I asked for, so I want to make that clear. We all put in a ton of work, and when I say we all, I mean, starting with me, James, and Jerry, department heads and staff, I mean, we are all completely full of work right now. I would guess that we are the fastest-growing city in America. If we're not, we're right there at the top. You know, 10% growth historically has been, you know, the fastest-growing. You know, some of those cities that have been listed as fastest-growing are 8%, 9%, again, we're 10. I think Frisco had an anomaly a year ago, and they were like 14%, which is just crazy, but... So we're right there, and if you compare our staffing levels to other communities of our size, we've... Just the ratio of population to staff, it's disproportionate right now. It has been my goal to add staff into the departments just as much as possible and keep pushing that, which oftentimes means that administration department heads pick up more of the load, and we have been picking up a lot of the load lately. So when Mayor Portem brought that forward to me, my first blush was to say, no, you know, we can just keep shouldering the additional load. But council has been pushing and noticing how much we are shouldering, you know, in the administrative level. So I was asked, and I've made a lot of, or I've had a lot of conversations with staff and council to try to figure out if this is something that makes sense in our organization. And the more I've thought about it, the more I've done some research, the more I think it does make sense, especially in light of the direction that the council's going, and I want to kind of make that clear. This council is definitely the most proactive council that I've ever worked with, hands down. The expectation of council is super elevated, which is a great thing. And, you know, when council sat down and had their retreat a couple of years ago and said gold standard, or I guess early last year, and then reiterated that again in the retreat this year, your foot has been on the gas pedal also to match that growth rate, and it has not come off, and I think that's a fantastic thing. We as staff have had to adjust to that, and I think we've done a great job. It just, it's, not only does it add to the workload, it just changes the focus of a lot of, you know, how we've been operating. So for me, as city manager, to react to the direction and the focus of council, it's been a great growing opportunity for me, very much a learning opportunity. But it shifted my role from what I would call just traditional management to being a little more 30,000-foot, you know, from a planning aspect to, you know, meeting with outside entities, you know, contract support, negotiation, negotiation. So there's just been a lot of additional council support, I would say, that's been incorporated into the role of city manager that was not there before. And I see this position continuing that transition, and I see this council continuing to push for excellence, which is perfect for the city of Kyle, and we are a gold standard city. So just to meet that demand of the growth, to meet the demand of the council and the push for excellence, the good to great and the great to excellence, I think this position is needed to kind of offload some of the traditional management roles, to provide help with James and Jerry and what they're already doing, and to the department heads. So we did put together a budget number for that. If you remember the last org chart, and I did a little kind of creative editing to the org chart and created a sample org chart, if you'd like me to put that up there with this new position. But it basically shifts some of those direct reports that I would have had to this new assistant. I know there have been several conversations where you've said, you know, should that be a deputy position? That would be over assistance. So we'll kind of look at that, but if we do that assistant or deputy position, we have put an all-in number in the budget of $250,348. The offset, because at this point, you know, anything that we're adding now to the budget needs some sort of offsetting revenue or deduction from what we proposed in the Budget Workshop number two. We are proposing to delete the local government corp manager position, and that's kind of the final part of this push. We made a pretty strong push. I'll call that the caramel position, but we made a pretty strong push to add a local government corp director that would oversee some of the property acquisitions and dispositions throughout the city, as well as oversee some of the downtown development with the new standards that the council is pushing. So again, that position would come out. Those roles and duties would fall largely on myself, and also then some be transitioned to that additional assistant or deputy position. There was also, so that was $88,511. There was a legal counsel and architect planner allotment that went with that of $150,000, so that would come out also. Not to say we would remove the architect and legal position services. We had $1.1 million also in this local government corp bucket that was going to be for property acquisition. The property that was in question that we were looking for is no longer on the market. We've used some of those funds for an additional property downtown. The remainder of that would be used for those architect services as well as legal counsel. So that...
Roy, say that again, Scott. The remainder of what money is going towards architect?
The $1.1 million for the property acquisition. So if you take $1.1, subtract what we will be expending for the park property, the remainder there would be for architect services for 104 South Burleson, and then, yeah, master plan and design guideline services downtown. So with those deletions of the local government corp position, as well as the $150 just being repurposed, that makes up the deputy city manager position. Did I answer your question, Mayor Portem?
Thank you, Scott. Since you put it together, I'd be curious to see if we're charged with you.
Give me one moment to log in, and I will throw that at player on the screen. Give me one moment to log in and I will throw that up here on the screen.
Coach, did you have more?
No, unless there's going to be a discussion on it or you wanted to wait till...
Yeah, I guess we'll wait.
Let me see if I can make this a little larger. I can. So if you remember this last year, we kind of went away from a, just a traditional, you know, tree hierarchy of an org chart and we made it a lot more functional to hit the city council goals. Those, you know, this was part of the case for Kyle, Kyle accountability standards for excellence. And there were six key function areas from the city council. So we wanted to make sure we focused our organization around those six core areas. And you'll see on the screen in the boxes are the departments and you'll see the white here, within each circle, is the function area. Now, I did add administrative support to, you know, as an additional one, but these other white circles are the six function areas that the city council came up with. So this would be assuming that the assistants, the manager and council, before we kind of struggled with how communications, because it touched everything, we had talked about doing like a little bar under it all. This way I just kind of put that circle right in the middle because it touches basically all facets of what we're doing. And the council's, really the council's primary goal was to communicate all the great things we're doing. And I think that we've done an excellent job with that as well. So again, you'll kind of see how everything touches, you know, something within the organization. If you recall from the last time we went over this, those items that are italicized are just kind of projects within what we're working on right now, focus areas or other organizations, you know, like TechDoc here. So everything just fits within one of these circles. And then again, you'll see how the oversight of each would happen.
Which of those circles would the new assistant city manager be incorporating? Or we haven't gone that far yet?
I think we'll probably end up restructuring a little bit, but it would be this one over here in this right circle, or right couple of circles. These departments are my direct reports and, you know, I will apologize to them because of my busyness. You know, they haven't received the management, the coaching, the oversight that the other department heads have received from James and Jerry, just because I haven't had the time to do that. So from a staff development standpoint, you know, I've been there for them, but I haven't been proactively there for them. And that's just my time limitations. So this would free that position up, you know, put them directly under somebody who would have more opportunity to really do more of that coaching and staff development.
And the other assistant city manager position is what James is currently doing. Is that what James is more into right now?
Yeah, James has these couple of function areas with direct oversight over engineering, public works, planning, environmental services and trades. And then Jerry has direct oversight over parks and rec, library, HR, and police.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. So this, you know, and I did kind of overlap boxes intentionally here because ultimately, you know, the city manager does, you know, work with every department head and I do frequently. So don't think that just because it's not under, you know, in that circle of mine, I communicate and work with department heads every single day. And, you know, I'm in meetings with them all the time. So this is really more, has to do with more of a direct management supervision and coaching and staff development than it does, you know, as we're getting things done. So I will still be very involved with every department, but just in a different role, if you will. The communications and events, I've still left right here in the middle, that would still be a direct report, legal by charter is a direct report. City secretary would kind of be a shared role from a staff development standpoint, it would be part of this new position. And then from, again, just oversight, et cetera, from working with council, it would be within that center circle where the city council lies. And then same with HR, civil service, those duties are, you know, they blend more into the city council role or, you know, the city manager role as needed. Yep, there's branding, brick and mortar district is kind of shared between economic development and here, and then lobbying legislative is, would be square in my role. Again, because council is very involved and touches everything also that, you know, they're square in that center role, touching every facet of the organization. Questions? I'll let you think about it for a bit. Well, you can move on to the next council item.
Yeah, I'll just say this about it. I think, I know you've put a lot of thought into this and figuring out what is mission specific and what really helps achieve the goals. I do want to say that, you know, I've managed people, I know many of my colleagues have as well. It can be a challenge to do what you're trying to do and help develop those that report to you. But that is part of what you do in management and supervising of people and that is a big part of it. That is also very mission specific. And I appreciate you acknowledging that, you know, that is something that hasn't been up to your standards as well for those department heads to do report to you. And so for you to say that publicly and acknowledge that in front of them today, I hope that that means something. It means something to me. I hope it means something to them. And this is an idea to try to help solve that and help their professional growth as well, which is extremely important to the morale of staff. And I think we should all, including council, be always cognizant of staff morale and how important that is to the mission as well and what they're doing. We talk about pay parity and other different things, growing departments, getting more positions, getting more help to people that are giving their all. And we have an amazing team, Kyle, that gives their all in every department. But it's just something we should always be aware of. And so I appreciate your attention to that. It's a challenge because there are a number of different positions that we could use in various departments and stuff, but what, you know, that's every year. Each one of us have three budgets that we have to kind of oversee in our term. And sometimes it is, you know, tackling one thing in one budget year and then going after it to next and the next. So I'm certainly not balking at the idea. It is something to consider. I guess, seems like we kind of all want to mull it over, but I appreciate it being brought up.
Scott, one final thing, I missed a number. What was the total pay for that position?
We have 250 put in with all salary and benefits and then, you know, additional support costs.
All right, thank you.
I can't really see that. I guess I just want to make sure it is hiring another person is going to be very specific about their job duties and that it's going to do the job of relieving and not adding additional. Sometimes when you make more management decisions, so I want to make sure we don't go into that issue. I want to make sure that James is okay, like, I'm kind of interested to know what he feels because, you know, he's going to be adding a partner to what he does. And then just making sure at the end of the day, because I don't want to hire another person and then we still have miscommunication, people don't, aren't on the same page sometimes. So just making a plan to make sure that there is a, I know we already have like a manager meeting once a week, but something a little more thorough for maybe Jerry, James, you, and then the new person, just to be sure we're all, you guys are all apprised. So if I ask James or ask Jerry a question, they'll know the answer and I won't have to go to you.
Well, I'll say this, September will be my 15th anniversary and I was the first assistant city manager that this city ever hired or created. It was a brand new position when I walked in the door. And we are about 10 years too late to add a second assistant city manager. So I think it's a great idea in that regard. Now, I will say this, the job duties aren't that too terribly different to me between me, a new assistant city manager, and like Mr. Siller said, these aren't, these aren't areas that Jerry and I are currently overseeing that are being retooled or sent away. It's things that he has been overseeing that he just can't, right? So in that regard, it's not a matter of like our jobs changing too terribly much, but there's really not that much difference between me and new assistant city manager and what the chief of staff does either, but there's a big difference in pay. So if we're going to be looking at these types of things, you know, I just would, I would ask for equity amongst everybody because the responsibilities and exposures are basically all the same. So. In most cities our size, I think you could justify three assistant city managers pretty easily, primarily for what you're seeing right there. Because as the organization grows in complexity, you just naturally find areas that kind of become your thing, right? And for me, it's been development. And some of that was just because I was here when the city was developing and it's the skills that I developed. It didn't really have anything to do with the background that I brought. Granted, you know, banking, finance and all that type of stuff I brought with me, so it kind of works. But in another life, maybe I would have ended up over finance, you know? It could have happened that way, but it's just the way that it worked out. So I think these, whenever I go and look in our profession, I usually see assistant city managers over administrative services, over development, and then over public safety. That's usually the three that you see and you, maybe you'll think of some more, but those are typically the three areas that you see over and over and over again. And this pretty closely reflects that.
Thank you.
Jerry, did you have anything to add to that?
I'd echo what James said and just say, I've worked with a number of city managers over two cities. I never seen anybody work as hard as Scott. So, and I can see the strain on the organization because he's out a lot doing the work that he does. And I think an extra hand to provide that direct supervision for his direct reports under his direction would benefit the organization.
No, I'm looking at the, what the assistant city manager would be overseeing. And the one thing that comes to my mind is the economic development. And I just keep thinking about what some of the residents ask for, like they're asking, I know Diana and her team do a great job, but I know a lot of residents always ask for sit-down restaurants, things like that. You think, one of the reasons that we've maybe not been able to bring those kinds of businesses here is because we need someone helping guide them a little bit more?
No, you know, to be totally honest, I think we've done a pretty good job. And I think Costco this last week was a great evidence of that. These things take time for one and the maturity of the city is the second one that they look for. You know, they look for a certain population base, certain income base, certain trade area base, and then, you know, they look at other restaurants that are either the same or similar in their primary trade area. So I think we and Kyle are growing into maturity when it comes to being ripe for some of these nicer upscale restaurants. So from a public standpoint, I know you've asked for a lot of fine dining, sit-down restaurants. We have worked on that a lot and we've heard the same story a lot, is, you know, San Marcos has those, South Park Meadows has those, Buda has those. Now we are hearing, no, tell me about Kyle again, you know, what's your population? What's your average household income? And we're getting a lot more looks and better looks from some of these. We also have developers who are more sophisticated now that have the ability to attract and locate in better spots for these restaurants. So there's, there are a lot of things in the works today that we just didn't have. I will say in the past, we have engendered those relationships, fostered those relationships with these restaurant groups. Diana has done a great job. I have been with her at some of the conferences where we've sat down with these ownership groups and talked to them about Kyle. They've started their folder for Kyle, right? And those folders' sizes are increasing as well. So we will have an opportunity to sit down with council here in the near future and go over the council's desire for some of these upscale restaurants. And then we'll sit down with the, not only the restaurant ownership group, but the developer to try to bring them here. And then the final thing I'll say is that the council, by being very proactive and visionary, has created that restaurant incentive. That's something I haven't seen anywhere else, to be honest. And I, that is gaining traction, momentum, especially within the industry. They're hearing that Kyle not only is, you know, wanting these restaurants, but willing to incentivize them when they make sense in their upscale. So that's, this position, this new role will only add to the strength of our attempt to bring them here. But it's not for a, I can't say that because we haven't had any up to this point, it's because we've been deficient in that area. It's just the timing is now hitting. And so we're going to need all hands on decks, on deck as we move forward.
All right, thank you, Scott.
I appreciate that breakdown because a lot of folks, I think, when we are all, when people come to us, they think it's just something we can go out and grab restaurants and say, and we're something that we're not doing. And I've seen Diana, I know folks can't see this probably, but throughout your entire explanation, Diana's affirmatively shaking her head. And so those are the challenges really. And it's not that we're not trying to go, you know, we're not doing everything we can to bring in fine dining, sit-down restaurants. We know that, we hear that community, but it's, they have to, they have to want to come here. They have businesses, they have margins and various different things that they need to meet in order to come here. And so I know we have been doing that, you talked about the incentives as well. So we've put it all out on the table and hopefully that starts to bear some more fruit here. But it is certainly not from a lack of giving every bit of effort.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll just say that my role will continue with economic development. We're just adding additional, you know, staff support and support to the department. So this is another way to, again, to add more strength there. They had a new position this last year, they've got a lot of internal as well. I mean, economic development is not just attraction, but it's, or recruitment, but it's retention, right? So there's been a lot of focus on current business development that we have in Kyle. We sure don't want them to leave for another community also. So, you know, our abilities in economic development have just increased as more we've added staff. We'll add this position. Again, I'm not going to walk away from that. I feel like I'm, you know, that's one of my passions. I love it.
You could walk away from it if you tried.
I couldn't.
No, I know.
So, you know, it's just more support, which is only going to help Kyle.
So Mayor Protam was nice enough to let me look at his screen. And it looks like this person that we would hire would have kind of a focus in the downtown, which I really like because I think that's something that maybe is lacked for. It's just not lacked, it's just we have a, it's a lot easier to go where it's not such a struggle to develop. And so it looks like, you know, Chamber of Commerce, I like that. I like the downtown, the economic growth. Yeah, so now that I can see, I'm good.
Great.
Thank you.
I know downtown's been a priority, high priority for the city council and, you know, brick and mortar district has been a high priority. So this really just allows us to focus on all areas of the city equally and, you know, make sure that the rising tide floats the entire city of Kyle. Okay, thank you.
I'll jump in next if it's... So I've got a few comments, questions, and proposals. So, um, I appreciate you giving the feedback. I'm just going to kind of go down the line here from the, the changes here. So forgive me, council, for taking the mic for a little while. Uh, the contribution to the senior center, uh, thank you for bringing that up. Councilmember Tobias Flores-Cale and I are on that task force. We had a great meeting, uh, with them this past week. Really, really insightful. They were really excited to go from that, but I, I think they kind of finally got an idea of what it takes to move this forward. And I, I don't know if we've really ever gotten to that point. Yeah, you can't just ask for it.
They were like, why now? Why all of a sudden you guys want to leave now? We're like, no, we always wanted to.
And I think they, they've realized the challenge on that. And, you know, uh, yeah, absolutely, Councilmember Tobias. And, uh, the gentleman, um, forgive me, Steven, uh, what's his name? That did the designs?
Steve Butler.
Steve Butler, yeah. Steve Butler, that did the great conceptual designs. By the way, council, if you want to see those designs, they're upstairs, uh, on that table just outside the city secretary's, uh, office. If you want to see those conceptual designs that they put together, really great job. They've been communicating and haggling within their own group on what they want in there, uh, which we told them, uh, at that meeting, uh, that, you know, we, we shoot high here in the city of Kyle and then we figure out how we can meet that expectation, AKA funding. So, uh, we told them to come with everything they'd like. And, uh, you know, they, they even had some disagreements and different things about what they wanted in there, but we told them, we're leaning heavily on them, on what they would like to see in there. And so they, they understand that and they're going to go and continue to sharpen the pencil on that. Um, but, uh, I think we also heard for the first time, or at least I'll, I'll say this for me, that Steven Butler could take it all the way through construction documents. And, uh, from one thing I've learned here, I'm being on the council now for four years, and we've talked about going out and getting money and funding projects, particularly, you know, we've talked about the lobbyists and different things like that. A lot of time that money comes when projects are shovel-ready, or as close to shovel-ready as possible. Uh, they don't happen at the very early stages of conceptual design and building up to construction design. And so that is a huge part of it. And we had, you know, an hour long of, uh, citizen comments last time we were here in June. And I think the council got the idea. Uh, and, you know, we talked about at the end, uh, adding the contribution for taking the con- conceptual designs to the full construction design and what that would cost. And Mr. Butler did say that he could do that. And so, um, that was a huge part of it. And we told, we talked to them about maybe, you know, breaking it down into a third, uh, of sharing that cost between the city, um, the seniors, and then another entity, i.e. the county grants, different things like that. And so, uh, at first they thought they were going to have to do a big bake sale to get their 200,000 or so. Uh, but they had one gentleman from, um, a group called H. Uh, they kind of was helping them as well and talked about other avenues that they can go through hospital, uh, grants and different things. So they've got a lot of work to do as well to try to help, you know, secure, uh, their third, but I think they have some options that they can do that. And I think that just kind of rejuvenated them. Uh, I know, I'm looking to my colleagues on the task force. That was at least my impression from that. And so it was a great meeting. They were very enthusiastic about it. They, I think they have a clear vision of what they need to do and what they need to accomplish to lift their, uh, leg of this project. And, um, I'm all for increasing that to 200,000 to, to get us more towards that. Uh, I know, uh, Mr. Butler, uh, gave Scott his, his number to do that. Hopefully that included the CAS discount. I don't know. But, uh, uh, you know, so that, that was just a very impactful meeting. I appreciate the council's support in moving this forward. I, I share that appreciation through CAS and the conversations I've had. Uh, I'll stop there before I move on to my next items. If, uh, Councilmember Flores-Cale or Councilmember Tobias had anything to add on that one.
Yeah, yeah. To read Councilmember Tobias for the record, it was a good meeting that we had the other day. Uh, and I understand, like emphasizing again the need for this community center, for our seniors, that was reiterated over and over again. Um, but again, it all comes down to the dollars of where we could start off. And, um, giving some direction as far as where we can go to get it through, either through some federal grants, state grants, and also, uh, by what we can do on our end. And you're right, the seniors were able to see that, uh, it takes a lot more than just, uh, saying, hey, this is what we want. There's a lot of processes that's come to, to play. So I, I think with this, this could help jumpstart the planning process and get it going because, you know, we're, we're all about shovel-ready. And so if we can get this going, um, I, I do think that this would really help. And then they can do their part and we can go and ask for others from the other areas.
I was just going to say, I've never seen a more eager group of people in my life. And I wish everybody had that same energy. Everything was like, okay, what's next? What's next? What's next? And so, um, I was really excited to see, and they were so grateful and they were so, um, ju- just a good group of people to work with. And so I'm excited to get moving forward on this. And, um, you know, for us, they're going to keep us on our toes and they're going to light that fire. And so, um, if we can get residents to come out here and help us do that in the same way to do other things. And, uh, I di- I did appreciate the fact that they did get a better understanding that it's not so cut and dry. And I wish we could sit with residents on a one-on-one and explain to them the process of all the things that really happens behind the scenes because just, you know, a, a short year ago, I was that. And, and I sit here and I think, oh man, I was so wrong about so many things. So, so anybody out there watching, yes, if you do have any questions, please reach out to me. And I, I don't mind explaining.
Can we get a timestamp on that comment right there? Well, that's all I had to say about item number one. Number two, um, so I did see the added of the senior planner position for the community development department. I appreciate the mayor looping me in on the conversation, uh, with staff, uh, emailing on the FTEs. And originally it was, uh, discussed for a process planner for short-term and here and now issues, I guess it was called, and then a long-term range planner, uh, as well. And so I just wanted to get Howard's feedback, um, since that deals with his department and he would oversee that. Uh, is that something you feel would be an efficient way of accomplishing what was originally proposed with a senior planner position? Talk to me about the benefits, pros, cons of, of doing it this way as, as opposed to the breaking down of the two.
Well, we still have existing staff, so, um, we can just look at their, their strengths and weaknesses and, you know, bringing in new people and just rearrange the workload. So it's, it's more about bodies at this point. Assignment of the workload can come later, but I mean, I ju- I just, we're, we're short on meatware, you know, not hardware, not software. We're short on the, on the practitioners.
Fleshware.
Yeah. So, um, that's, that's prob- any, any help is going to help.
We'll get Grant on that one. He's good at editing those things. No, thank you, thank you, Howard. Uh, I appreciate that. And you know, certainly, uh, wanted to get your feedback on that. And I hope staff kind of sees that, you know, as we are dealing particularly with these positions and different things, it is important to get y'all's feedback. And I, I was really appreciative of what, uh, James and Jerry had to say about the last position and getting their, their thoughts on that. Um, and then Howard, yours on this one as well. So, uh, I, I, I was in agreement with that last time we talked and, and certainly I, I see the, the benefit as well for our planning department, especially if we're going to go into, uh, some of the things we're doing, uh, in other areas. And, and so that's, that's what I just wanted to know about that one. Same thing with the parks position. Um, Mariana, I know last time Councilmember Rizzo brought up, uh, transitioning that to a trails maintenance supervisor. Could you give us a little bit of your feedback as well from what is originally proposed in the, as I sometimes call it, the kitchen sink, uh, meeting, which is, is good. I just want to clarify that I call it that because it's, it's certainly everything that we bring, or staff brings forward in that first meeting is, uh, can be beneficial to our city, but we just have to, unfortunately, we have a pie and it's the size that it is and we got to figure it out. But, uh, talk to us a little bit about how transitioning it into this role could be an efficient, good or bad in your, in your position.
Kind of the same right now. We just need bodies. While I did initially request for a trails lead and a park maintenance lead, um, because there is a need in both sides and the workload is very heavy, a park maintenance and trails lead all in one is better than not having a lead at all. Um, and so, yeah, definitely happy with anything that we are able to get.
Gotcha. Like, like Howard said, sometimes just moving those, uh, those responsibilities around, but definitely need the, the positions and the body. Understood.
Can I ask you a question? Um, so I, if we do an increase of pay for someone for like, you know, 12,000, it doesn't really create a body, does it at all for either one? It just, does it create extra duties for somebody? Because I guess, and, and I want it, like this, I, I'm not saying no to this. This is a great idea and I think we should. But I also think we're not really adding anybody, we're adding more responsibilities.
We're changing the title and responsibility of a new position. So it, so we are adding...
We are adding. Okay. Perfect. Never mind.
So that $12,000 addition is for the increase in salary and fringe benefits. For the new position.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Okay. But we will have to hire somebody to fill that position that, that person moves up, correct? Okay, we're sideways or higher in, but yeah.
Yeah. And, and the reason for the increase is because we're giving them more duties. It originally was proposed just for a parks lead, but now he's going to be a parks and trails lead. So he's going to have a lot more duties.
Or she.
Or she.
Or she. Yeah, sorry. He or she. My bad.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, moving on down here, I don't have anything to say about the outdoor fitness court, uh, or sludge. Um, so could you, uh, certainly, and certainly I've slept too, and, uh, remind me of the Catalyst Consulting contract and bringing that back. And certainly we have newer colleagues as well that weren't on here from the first time I was here. Could you, uh, you or Diana or, or someone give us, uh, a little more details about what that, what that looks like, what that did before, and how it can be beneficial bringing that back now?
Thank you. Better? Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, so in regards to the Catalyst Commercial, um, contract, that is a contract that we worked with, um, as an outsourcing, uh, so that we could focus on specific retail recruitment. Um, we worked with them for probably nine or 10 years, um, before we pulled that back because we didn't have any retail space that was available to be leased. So it was kind of paying a, going to be paying a consultant to recruit and get an answer from the retailers, well, where are we going to go? So now that we have the space on the ground, um, and have had the announcement of, you know, some of these new, um, people that are going to be joining us in Kyle in regards to businesses, uh, we feel like it's probably a really good time. And also kind of to the comments of Councilmember Rizzo earlier, um, they help us focus on that in regards to the most important to, to me is, um, being able to, uh, schedule meetings for us, uh, because that is very time-consuming. Um, and then to keep that follow-up going and keep us included the entire time. So we get pulled in, um, year-round with them in meetings. We make very special requests of them. Um, they do for this, uh, project that just announced last week, they did very specialized data research, um, that they know that that company, excuse me, looks at because they also, on the other side, um, work with a lot of these companies in site selection. So they're very familiar with all that.
Anything to add to that, Scott? Or, oh, real quick, when was the last time that we had Catalyst Commercial, uh, on contract?
Two years ago, I believe.
Two years, yeah.
And so that would be, that $20,000 would be a contract for one year. So that would be, if we were expecting to continue that, that'd be...
Yeah. So this is, it, so we had five in the budget just for consulting. So we're adding the 20s for a $25,000 contract with Catalyst. And, uh, yeah, our anticipation is that, you know, we, we bring this again year over year, uh, as they're adding value and bringing these retailers to these power centers. Uh, we, we have now three, I would say, large power centers that we are working with that we can locate retailers into who are, uh, not just big box retailers, but going back to the question about restaurants, Catalyst Commercial has a great, great relationship with a lot of these fine dining establishments.
And that's what we've all heard. Um, how could this benefit? So the only, um, I think when we had the Costco added earlier this week, that's probably the most universally I've seen people excited on a social media post of ours probably ever. Uh, there were a handful, yeah, that was great. There were a handful of comments though, and I, I think they're, uh, I did think they're fair legitimate comments. And I just wanted to give this an opportunity to talk about the smaller businesses and what this city does for small businesses. Because a lot of people, you know, do see the, the, a large retailer like Costco come in and they, rightfully so, uh, whether they're in that small business or, you know, or have family or supportive of small business shopping and different things like that. Uh, can we talk a little bit about what this city does for small businesses? Maybe how this contract may even be able to help benefit that? And something that we are aware of and, and keeping an eye on.
Sure. So, um, over the past year, year and a half, um, we have had a big focus, maybe even longer now, on the First Year on Us program, um, which is the reimbursement of taxes for, um, commercial improvements. And that was specifically created so that we could have a level playing field, um, for a, an incentive-type program for any-sized business in Kyle. Um, so anybody of any size that's doing any kind of permanent improvements to their property, um, qualifies for that. Uh, we also did, um, put $150,000 in the, um, COVID, um, program for small business relief. We actually had a really hard time finding people to even apply for it. So that was a little disheartening. Um, and so when we hear these other comments about what we do for small business, it, you know, it becomes a difficult, um, kind of line to walk. But, um, we know that small business and mom and pops are the heart of communities. And so we, you know, do a lot of hand-holding. Uh, we do a lot of, um, kind of mediating in the, the realm of getting business plans, um, done. Um, now that we have someone specifically that's helping with business retention and expansion, they would fall under them as well if it's an existing, um, like mom and pop or small business. And, uh, we are going to be focusing more on, uh, adding programming for them, like training and actually partnering with the library on some of the, um, the programs that they had started. Because we, it seems like we were both kind of, um, going towards the same, um, goal there without realizing it. So we're partnering up on that. Um, and then, um, we have, on a daily, uh, aspect, anybody can call us with any of their needs or questions. And, um, I mean, it, it's really been surprising, um, like since COVID and people have had, had to put packages, like financial packages together, um, to have the realization, um, that most or a lot of small businesses don't even realize what they should know about their business. Um, you know, the backend side that they should be very familiar with and know like the back of their hand, they are not. So we're kind of starting there, um, to help them get a good base underneath them.
I appreciate that answer. So I, I heard a number of different things like incentive opportunities their first year on us. I've heard, uh, uh, administrative assistant and being always available, uh, to our small businesses. Because a lot of times corporations have those in-house. This is something maybe a small business doesn't have in a resource that is free essentially to, uh, our small businesses to utilize our economic development department for business plans and different things like that. Um, the other thing I, I would add too, that was stated during the, the chamber... The other thing I would add too, that was stated during the chamber luncheon, just before the State of City address, was HPI's building as well, the new buildings they're doing. And they talked about doing a small square, smaller square footage to kind of meet the needs of some of those smaller businesses as well. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So over the past decade, we were really recruiting for big industrial spec. Because that was a major gap in between Austin and San Antonio. That was glaring to everybody and everybody was chasing it. So now that we have been successful in filling that gap, the next is really looking at what the trends are that we have been seeing over the past couple of years. And one of those has been for some smaller industrial manufacturing type space, which we have several mom and pops that were looking for that space. We didn't have anything on the ground because obviously everything is pretty much new building, Kyle. And then these large projects that were coming in were not willing to subdivide as small as these mom and pops or kind of startups would really need or require right now. So that became kind of a glaring gap was the in-between. And so they are going to be addressing some of that now, which is really great. We did have one small project on the east side that did a few 10,000 square footers that filled up immediately. But once those were filled and did not really meet the logistical needs of some of these growing companies, we really needed another opportunity for that kind of size facility, but in a really good logistical position. As far as, you know, ingress and egress and trucks and being able to support the infrastructure and that kind of stuff. So it's really great that HPI is deciding to be able to subdivide.
Fantastic. Thank you, Diana. Appreciate that. Also, bottom line, if you're a small business out there, reach out. Let us know how we can help in that way. I'm almost done, Council, I promise. So that's all I had to say about the changes on the slide here. I had one other item of new proposal for the council to consider. So as we, as we know, we had Prop F pass last November with the police oversight, communication, collaboration. Proposition change to our charter that the voters approved last November overwhelmingly. And then it dictated that an ordinance would be, need to be created to iron out the specifics of that very broad language. And so we've been working on that ever since then, in some ways. Ever since that vote passed and the council approved a task force to really get into the nuts and bolts of this and then make a recommendation to council for consideration before we write one single word of that ordinance, which is a vastly different way of approaching writing an ordinance. Typically, that is not how an ordinance is created. But I'm appreciative of the council being supportive of it, doing this way and gathering input from what we have talked about on the task force, the three prongs. Our citizenry, our city administration, that includes council, and then our police force. We need all three of those prongs coming together, giving input and feedback as we create this ordinance. Something that's also unique about the creation of this ordinance. And so I've had the pleasure of working with Councilmember Rizzo and Councilmember Tobias on this task force. Last, I guess it's early this month, it was the day before we had the Verity groundbreaking. We had our first meeting as a task force, second time I've gone to meet with CLIA and kind of go over where we were at, getting their feedback. And it was a very thorough, robust discussion. We took up quite a bit of their time, but I want to say it was all, every second of it was meaningful and impactful and a lot for us to take, to take back and consider as a task force and then ultimately bring to the council for consideration on their thoughts on various different things. And so I want to thank those members of that association for that feedback as well and their input and willingness to speak up. I know sometimes that might have been difficult to talk about or discuss to elected leaders. But we're taking the approach of having a very open-minded and feedback-oriented approach to this. And so I thank Councilmember Rizzo and Councilmember Tobias being a part of that. So we had a number of different pieces of feedback. We went over how the city has continued to increase the budget. I've said this before privately and I'll say it publicly as well. I love the slides that our finance department puts together and really shows how things have changed over the years. And if you look back at our police slides, you will see the increase of our budget at about $1.2 million a clip. If I'm not mistaken, I'm looking at our finance department, if I remember correctly, each year in that increase. So a commitment to that, our police department year over year. Obviously putting the Public Safety Center on the ballot in a pandemic year that has been worked on for two years. We started on that process in, well, really the early discussions with those that are sitting on council in December of 2018 and moving that forward into summer 2019. Narrowing it down from about eight different options to eventually coming to a new site. Going through all the process, unaware that a pandemic would hit us, preparing everything to be on slate for the 2020 election, which we knew that we'd have the highest voter turnout in the city's history, being a presidential election. And if we were going to propose a bond tax increase to our voters, we wanted to have as much say on that. And so all of that has happened and including our voters passing, willing to open or passing this Prop F. They were also saying in that same election that they were willing to open their pocketbooks and continue to support our police. So that's a unique community that we live in and we work for. I think that's, that's really, really interesting and really telling. But going back to the task force and that conversation we had with CLIA earlier this month and getting some feedback. And we showed them some of the positions that we, that were proposed in this budget. The strategic analyst position, because we are asking for a lot of information and data based on the change in the charter, as well what the ordinance would ask for. And so having a position that would be solely responsible for collecting that and doing that and then that would not fall on our lieutenants and other supervisors or even our officers to compile that data and get that for the public and city administration to see. But also the public engagement position, I believe is a sergeant position that we've added as well to continue forward with that effort of community policing and community engagement through, through our police force and how we would approach that. And so they were very supportive of these things. And I want to just make that clear that they were very supportive of that as well as all the other additions. But one of the things that was given as feedback in that, and I, it really hit home for me. And we had a conversation as a task force about this, was with all the efforts and they agree with wanting to be more community policing oriented, community engagement oriented, that they still need, they have two shifts and they're still in need of patrol officers to be able to, have them be able to get out there and do those things that we want to do, that they want to do. And so getting that support and bolstering the force has something that, that they said would be even helpful, more helpful to that mission that we are trying to accomplish. And so we had a conversation as a task force, debriefing from that. And the task force did come up with the idea to add two patrol officers to this year's budget for the reasons that I mentioned before and helping support that. The efforts of community engagement, community policing. So with that being said, we did ask Purves for cost estimates on a patrol officer plus supporting costs. A patrol officer payroll costs plus benefits would be $80,095. So that's, that's for one. Uniform and supplies would be $5,500. And then if we were to add a vehicle as well for the officer, probably even sharing that between the two, it'd be $16,848 were the cost estimates we received from finance for that. So you can do quick back of the map napkin math there. Essentially for the $85,600 for the payroll and uniform costs times two for two officers and then adding the just under $17,000 for the patrol pursuit vehicle for that position. And I guess before I talk about the second part of that, I know I've been hogging the mic and I definitely know Councilmember Rizzo and Councilmember Tobias might have some additions they want to add to this conversation about why we felt like these two positions were necessary to the discussion.
Just Councilman Tobias. Working in law enforcement myself, I understand the need for the officers, the boots on the street. Just hearing, going to the meeting with the CLIA and hearing their concerns about being short staffed, having that extra additional officer, I really feel that we got to have that, that extra person. Due to the fact that whenever somebody is out or somebody is out on medical leave, you have those officers that are patrolling. And if there is ever an assistance call, that they might have to reach out to another agency because they're short staffed. And I would really hate for that to happen to where we, we have a situation to where officers are short staffed one evening or during the day and we don't have that additional, as I would say, search and extra officer available to relieve them for whatever it is. We need to be able to have that backup available for them. And I feel that adding the additional two positions, you could possibly, again, if this goes through, we could have one for the, for the day shift and one for the evening or however we would work it out. But I just strongly feel that if we're going to really support our police officers, if we're going to really back our blue, we got to really look at what the priority is in getting an additional officers on the street. That should be the top priority and that's the way I looked at it for a safety and security standpoint for our community.
Yeah, I could agree with you more. I think the, I think the, this year we had a couple of needs we needed to fill. And I thought about this throughout the year. I knew patrol was one of the biggest needs we needed to fill. And unfortunately, we had a monkey race thrown into that. When it happened when the, when the task force for the drug enforcement dissolved, the partnership between the county, city of Kyle and San Marcos dissolved. We had to fill that void and we did it with adding an officer, drug intervention officer with that. And then we also added a management position with Prop F pass as well. So I think that kind of tied our hands a little bit in where we're going with patrol. But I'd like to see an overlapping patrol. The two officers could give us that in those key area, key hours of the evening when we're having more issues would probably be the best time to, for those two officers to come in to help. But also I think that we would be falling further behind if we weren't able to fill these two positions. If we didn't actually reach out and try to create these two positions that we're so lacking in. The reason is we continue to grow as a city and we're, I just want us to be able to try to keep up with the growth. Because I think right now we're, we might be behind. And if we continue to, as I always like to say, push this can down the road, we're just going to fall further and further behind. And I'm just thinking about the safety of our citizens and I think these are two positions we really need to consider.
Thank you, Councilmember Tobias and Rizzo. Looking comfortable there, Rizzo. Got to be comfortable budget meetings, right? But yes, absolutely. And I appreciate the comments made there. And certainly Councilmember Rizzo's been around for a long time. Councilmember Tobias's background in law enforcement are invaluable to this task force and what we're doing. And we really, we're not just having these meetings just to say we're having these meetings. We want feedback. We, this is what we're trying to take from this and trying to add to what we're doing. And so I appreciate that we've had this opportunity. And it's been said a lot of times before that it seems a lot of reactive what our police force is doing instead of being proactive and adding enforcement and officers to our agency can help us be a little bit more proactive. Patrol, I know I've had emails, probably some of you all had as well about, you know, that subject in itself. I know when we had the fireworks and different things, I heard from a lot of folks over in my area in Amberwood about things like that. And so this, this can help us get there. I know last time we heard about, you know, really needing to do it in fours. But sometimes we can, we can do what we can and we aim for another, another budget year. And I think this would be a prudent step forward, you know. And one thing that I, I'll say this and I'll finish up my, my point of where this money's going to come from. You know, we, we keep the bar high. And that's what I really love about our hiring practices with, across the city really. But specifically talking about our PD, we just added a star of his class candidate this past week, Mr. Kyle. I forget his last name. Crouch, but he has the great first name. He was destined to be here. Adding that officer, top of his class, you know, we do training all the time. I know Councilmember Bradshaw and Mayor Pro Tim and I think one other council member was at our last fitness training and different things and we have people come out. But, you know, it doesn't always pan out to getting the numbers. And that's because we keep the bar high and we are looking for the best and brightest in this agency. And, you know, we've added a public safety center and various different things to help with recruitment as well. Not just to, that agency, you know, has long needed that, but it can help with recruitment and various different things like that. So I just wanted to kind of hammer down those points really quick on that. And so, and I certainly appreciate that we keep that bar high and continue to look for the best and brightest in each class. So with all that being said, obviously that's about $188,000 that we need for two officers plus support costs, supplies, uniforms and all that, plus one vehicle essentially. Probably could work for adding those two officers. So that's where I get the $188,038 from. So the initial proposal that the task force came up with was that, you know, I know we've talked a lot about the lobbyist positions and how that can help us find grants and other different positions or other different opportunities out there. And I think the, the task force that has been working on finding those lobbyists has done a good job with the, finding a top federal lobbyist candidate that even had, I was looking through their materials. They had, what was it, former Representative Lamar Smith? Who is from Texas and kind of adds another addition to not only just federal connections, but state connections as well. And as I mentioned before, sometimes, you know, we have to do what we can each budget year. And I, you know, initially was in agreement on, you know, the, the two lobbyist positions, looking at a federal and state one. But I think from the conversations we had as a task force, it might be prudent that we could tackle one of those lobbyists this year and then maybe look at next year for the second lobbyist. So we proposed whatever funds that weren't used to, it seems like it's, the initial conversations have gone towards the federal lobbyists. Instead of doing a state lobbyist this year, we take those cost savings from there to add toward this position. Ballparking it, having talked with Scott previous about this. It, I think it was about 160, if I'm not mistaken, for the federal lobbyists that we were kind of looking at.
172, I think.
172. So 128,000 would go towards cutting into that 188. So that'd be about 60,000 left over that we'd have to find a. So that'd be about sixty thousand left over that we'd have to find a additional fundings there. And I did kind of give Scott and therefore his team a heads up on this, on another way to kind of tackle the rest of that cost estimate amount to fill both of these positions. And Scott, if you had any thing to fill that in for that?
Scott, before you move up, can I propose something? I've been looking at the budget as well and put a little consideration into it. We have the forty-five thousand we saved on the firework last year, which would bring our cost down to one forty-three. What do we have on the over and under reserve for the city? Is that something we could do?
If you're talking about the bottom line cash position of the city right now, the slide number three had all been wrapped into the bottom line general fund numbers to balance the budget. The additional hundred for the senior center would be in addition to that. So we're making a list of the changes right now. The forty-five thousand dollars was, I believe, Prevez, and correct me if I'm wrong, that was already wrapped in to help make the changes on slide three. So at this point, we kind of came into this meeting even with a balanced budget.
All right, so we've got nothing in reserve to fund this?
No, we would have to dig into cash reserves for, if you're talking about pulling from reserves for this position, we'd have to, to bring new monies.
Definitely what I'm, you'd have to bring the new money in order to have it.
Right. Now there, because I was made aware of the conversation and so we'd been working hard behind the scenes to find something that, that could be the equivalent offset. I've talked to Chief and I'd like to ask Chief Barnett to share a few things that may just help answer the question.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So this next year, we see a return in some of our operations to what we would call returning to normal operations. We obviously experienced some anomalies with the COVID and that adjusted our patrol response and it also impacted our staffing. Obviously, we had staff members that came down with COVID or that were exposed to COVID, so they had to do their quarantining and that impacted our staffing levels and therefore we had reassigned many officers from their specialty positions. One of those in particular is our traffic division. Many of our traffic officers had to resume normal patrol duties, which means out there answering calls instead of necessarily enforcing our traffic laws. And things are returning to normal with our staffing level and we hope that they're, well, no, we know that they're going to be able to get out there and enforce the traffic laws in a way that we would want to improve our roadway safety. Another impact that hit us and for officer safety reasons, our officers, whether they be patrol or traffic or otherwise, were actually instructed for a number of months to not make traffic stops unless what they had observed was an absolute danger to the community around them. So the routine traffic stops for an expired registration or inspection or other smaller items were not being made. And this is back, if you go way back to when COVID was very, very uncertain for all of us and nobody wanted to have communication with one another unless it was absolutely necessary, we directed our officers to stop making the routine smaller violation traffic stops. All of that is coming back into play now. Obviously, the traffic, we all see it, it's back. Texas is thriving, central Texas is thriving and everybody's on the move again. With that, unfortunately, our accidents have returned and the goal and purpose of traffic enforcement is to improve roadway safety. So our traffic officers are resuming their duties, they're returning from their patrol assignments and they're going back to work. Another one of the things that's going to happen in the normal course of duties, if you remember, we talked about the commercial vehicle inspection or enforcement that we're undertaking, that's a very specialized set of training courses that our officers attend, that our traffic officers are attending. And there's a byproduct of that. We do it for two reasons, to improve roadway safety for all of our motorists and pedestrians and second, to prevent the damage to our city streets. These overweight vehicles that are using city streets that they're not supposed to use are damaging and tearing up the streets and these CBE officers, it's our traffic division, will be out enforcing those new laws as well. And I say new to them, they're not new on the books, they're new to them. Those have a byproduct, those have very hefty fines. The state intends for overweight loads and heavy trucks that have other violations such as brakes that are not working and tires that aren't kept in good shape, they want to make an impact on them, so they allow very hefty fines. So you'll see that come in through the normal course of enforcement. Also, our warrant officer was asked to minimize his contact with the community as well during the COVID pandemic and therefore we were not necessarily bringing people into the court. Member City Hall was closed, we weren't bringing people into the courtroom to pay their fines, nor were we going out and making those arrests and trying to stack the jail during COVID with Class C misdemeanors. We're in a different time now and all of our officers, including traffic and warrants, are returning to their normal duties. The other good news is, is that we have, we have not slowed down in our hiring process and we have hired a number of new officers and cadets at their various levels. We just recently had some graduate from the academy that are now resuming their in-house field training program. We had, we've had some graduate from the FTO program and they're now out on the streets performing their duties as full-time officers. And we have a couple of more starting in about ten days from now. So we have another couple of officers that'll be starting, one of those is certified, so we're avoiding the academy there. What does that all mean to the traffic division and potential, as a side benefit, the revenue that's associated with them doing their normal duties is that we're getting fully staffed. We are very, very, we only have one opening right now, one vacancy. We have some in training and whatnot, but we have just one vacancy and we have several in background, so that's going to be taken care of soon. All in all, that means more officers enforcing the traffic, more doing the job that they're supposed to do as we recover from COVID and get our staffing up. So I have no doubt that you're going to be able to see some offset there that we've, that we did not realize this year because of COVID and staffing shortages. Those numbers that are historical will return to normal. Hope I summarized that well enough.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you talked about...
We can't hear you, Robert.
Sounds fine to me.
Robert?
Robert, I'm talking. It's letting me, then when he's done, I'm like, okay.
Looks real important.
South Marine Island Drive, ten thousand, that's the wrap there.
Okay, somebody is broadcasting. Someone needs to mute it.
Right, we're seriously.
That did not sound like our radio traffic, although it sounded like emergency services. I'm sure he said something great and I would have probably agreed with it, so yeah, sure.
Can he see us?
I think he's somewhere between two and ten officers now.
I think he's at ten, ten for sure.
He said ten, ten.
Over the next two years.
Councilmember, we were unable to hear you.
We've got some cross traffic going on.
Yeah, it did. It sounded like something was bleeding into the system, but it did not sound like...
What number, real quick, would that put us at?
Can you hear him down?
There we go.
Yes, sir, we can.
I was just asking, what number would that put us at?
Okay, I turned off my camera. I think the camera's messing me up. Okay, I just, I just want to say with the COVID numbers rising, three hundred and thirty-three new cases, we just had a death this past week. I think we're still not out of the woods on that, but I do see the increased traffic and the reckless driving and I'd really like us to focus on that part of it. I know registration stickers are out, but I think still people being afraid of going into public places to renew their registration and some people don't have the capability to go online. So I think right now, I just don't see us being out of the woods with COVID yet. And I'd still caution on where we put our officers at in when it comes to line of duty. But that's kind of what I'm thinking right now, but yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir, we certainly will. Another thing that we have proposed and included in the current budget for council's consideration is the use of technology. We all know that we can do better with the use of technology and LPR, the LPR system, which is currently in our budget, will also help our officers perform those duties. That will help them detect stolen cars, missing children, missing elderly citizens for the gray alerts, and it will also help them detect those that have warrants and those that have expired registration and other things that will help them do their duties and I think that's using smart money right there to help them perform their services as well. So we appreciate you including that in there too. And I think Councilmember, you asked, how many officers would we have?
Yeah.
Completely, so today we are authorized to fifty-four. We had three that were, I'm going to say tentatively approved already in previous discussions of this budget and then I hear you mentioning two more today. That would put us at a total sworn staff of fifty-nine and that's from the chief to the newest officer.
Gotcha. And I appreciate you adding the technology part as well, that's a key component of this. But also, you know, we hear all the time too, particularly from our community, and we all kind of talk about it as well, training. And by adding officers, I know our agency does very cognizant of training and sending the training, but that also can be helpful for that because if they're off the training, we need that backfill and different things like that. So increasing the training and awareness and de-escalation, all those different things that people in the community talk about, we need, we need steel bodies to kind of fill in when they're doing that and to allocate that time to do that as well. So I appreciate you bringing the technology piece also as well on that.
What was our number, if we were to add those two officers? I'm sorry, Chief.
That would bring us to a total of fifty-nine officers and that would include the previous three that you've tentatively approved in our discussions.
Yeah, and that's for a city of fifty-eight thousand residents. What is the total of San Marcos, Scott? Do you know what their total residents are?
I have an idea. He's in a conversation. The city of San Marcos is slightly, somewhere around seventy thousand or slightly below and I believe their current authorized strength is one hundred and sixteen sworn officers.
Hundred and sixteen, so double, almost double what we have right now, actually double.
More than, yes, sir.
And yeah, more than double. And GUTA is currently at thirty-something thousand residents, I believe, and how large is their force?
I think they're just under thirty. I think they're approaching thirty officers.
Thirty officers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a ballpark on where we stand right now as a department. And keep in mind that San Marcos also has Texas State, which is, I believe is about forty-two officers, correct?
Yes, sir.
So you're looking at about a hundred and if you were to combine those two, a hundred and sixty-something officers in San Marcos, the San Marcos area.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Chief Tobias here. On average, what is your ratio as far as officers on duty with A and B shift?
So we operate four shifts just to cover the seven days a week, so we have an A, B, C, and D, if you want to look at it that way. We generally have four officers and a sergeant. If everybody's there, if everybody were to be on staff, we would have five plus a sergeant with our current staffing. That would include everybody's out of training, out of FTO and such.
So five officers per shift?
Yes, sir, five officers, yes.
For the large amount of city we got. So we add the additional, that would help.
And again, that's if everyone's there and not in training and not sick leave and not FMLA and you name it, all the different types of leave. But yes, sir, if everyone's reporting to duty, we would have five officers and a sergeant and these two that you've mentioned today would go a long way in improving our services.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to bring that up for the record.
Chief, you said at the beginning, you said at the beginning that you thought you could handle the two FTEs out of the police budget this year? You said that you were talking about new revenues coming in?
Oh, yes, sir.
It's what's on the sheet.
I'm sorry, yes.
It's a balanced proposal from the CM.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I just didn't understand what you're saying. Yes, but absolutely, I think we can and that's in large part due to a return to normal operations as we bounce back from COVID and when our staffing is up and with all the new employees that we were given and we're filling those vacancies now, I do believe so, yes, sir.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Yes, sir.
To just, I want to make sure I understand that, then clarifying, you could find a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to add these two positions and the vehicle without us having to cut anywhere else, or?
I do think so based on the information, the proposal that we're talking about on increased revenue for services and other things that are, that the PD produces, I think there's a balancing effect between their work product and whether it be warrants served and money brought into municipal court, citations issued and their normal course of work, yes, sir.
And just so you know, we're not just spitballing with that, we looked at historical numbers and the way we are today compared to historical prior to COVID, prior to some of these initiatives and being fully staffed like we are now, and we, we had those revenues historically. So we think again, just by being post-COVID, additional technology and the way we're moving forward, that we'll just get back closer to those historical numbers just by the nature of active policing.
Yes, sir.
So just to clarify, my thoughts on that are if we're, if that's the proposal, that's fine, if we want to talk about cutting from the budget, I have suggestions that I might want to bring up to where we would cut as well, so.
Councilmember Flores, Kail for the record, I'm not interested in cutting anything in the police department, mostly because I feel like they've been a little bit punished for the positions that they've been required to hire in regards to the, not to the bond, but to the Prop F. So we've somehow taken those positions and I don't want to say use them against, but use them against the police department and those are positions that we could have used in other ways. So I know that they struggle, everybody knows where I stand and I did all my homework at the beginning of the year, all the crime statistics, the population, how big we are, how many we should have, how many we do have, and I'm always going to vote yes for more police officers. And I understand right now maybe the building's not big enough, but eventually it will be and when that day comes, I don't want to have to be rushing around to get more officers. So I'm not interested in cutting anything that they have and especially when it comes to maybe money and fees, we can't be sure that's where we're going to get it from necessarily. It's a hope and then I know he said we're going back to normal, but there's no guarantee on that. And so I'm not willing to take that risk when we have money in other ways and it doesn't necessarily have to be from the lobbyists, it could be from other places, but I'm just not comfortable moving forward.
What we're saying, what's being proposed, what's on the sheet, sorry to interrupt, but what's being proposed is a balanced budget. So that's all I'm saying is that right now it's being proposed that we don't have to cut anything.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he was saying that he would have things to cut, not from PD, but from other questions.
Not from PD, right, we'll have a discussion if we want to cut. I mean, it's been proposed to cut the lobbyists because the Prop F task force maybe came up with that idea.
But let me make sure I'm understanding this, you're saying that they could use their own funds that they already have, which may...
That's what's on the proposal.
Right, and I get that, but are those funds being used for, there's just extra funds that we assume that they're going to have or are they like for sure funds that we know for certain that they're going to have?
All revenue projections are assumed.
Okay.
They're not for sure.
And that's my concern.
Right, so like we're like a million dollars over sales tax or whatever, you know, like it just, you know, the monies get balanced, but if the financial department, the police department, city manager think that there's a way to accomplish what the three of you have proposed without cutting from another, that's the much easier path so that we don't have to get into a long discussion about which resources are most important to cut and, you know, so it seems like the easiest path is right before us.
Certainly, and I think, you know, when the task force discussed this, we were unaware that there would be funds available within the own department to, and propose revenues that would be able to fund such a position. So that's why we came up trying to prepare coming to this discussion with some options to cut. And I understand, you know, that even the proposals that we gave may give some heartburn, but it is something we felt was significant enough to add to the critical mission of what we're trying to do, not only as a task force, but as a whole. And so that's why we brought forward that position. We were completely unaware that this could possibly be covered through rev, proposed revenues, which is I think new to, new to us. And honestly, would have, if that was an option, would have liked to have maybe seen that sooner, but yeah, I think, I don't think anybody's really advocating for any cuts from the PD, I think it was from other places that we would have to cut.
Right, if necessary. Everyone in council is going to have different opinions about what's appropriate to cut from the budget. That's not a Prop F task force discussion, that's a council level discussion. Making a proposal is fine, but I definitely would have thoughts and opinions as, as I'm sure the others who are not in that room would have thoughts and opinions about what's most important to them to cut out of the budget. about what's most important to them to cut out of the budget.
Certainly. We needed to come with an idea, and we knew we couldn't just come with a proposal and not come with an idea of where we could get those funds from, or at least starting the discussion from. So that's where that came from. Certainly, we know we're three, and the council would need to weigh in on that decision. It's a recommendation.
If that's the case, could we still look at possibly going through with that, and instead of with the two, eventually end up with four positions?
You're saying you really want to cut the lobbying budget?
To add the additional two officers, then to have a total of four?
Yes.
I think two is good right now. I mean, right now, we're at zero, adding zero patrol this year. I think two is a good starting point. I think next year, we'll look at another two to fill in that void. But I think two officers is good because we are adding other positions as well, and I know there's other needs throughout the city. So definitely, I don't want to seem like we're just one-sided and we're just going one direction. I think that we need to count our blessings right now that we got the two officers that we're advocating for because if you look at our budget throughout the city, we actually have a need all the way across in all departments. But getting those two officers and not having to cut nothing, I think that's a blessing right now.
That I understand, but, you know, we were not cutting both lobbyists out. We were just looking at postponing one for one year.
Well, so, yeah, I understand that. My response would be, you know, from my perspective, it's, the lobbying budget is also way overdue, and it's the only line item in our budget, or it's one of the very few line items in our budget that are designed to bring in more revenue as opposed to less. There are probably 10, 15 other things I'd rather cut than the lobbying budget, you know, for myself, just because of how impactful those dollars can be to our overall budget, up to and including going out and getting police dollars and all other kinds of dollars, grants and things like that. So I just, I think that going after the big dollars is something that, you know, we should pursue. But I've always been that way. I've always tried to, you know, build a lobbying budget. So there's just, there's just a ton of different items in here that I think if our priority is we want to continue to weigh more heavily on the police, that, you know, it would be better to take from than that particular item, but...
For example?
I mean, we can go down that list, but, I mean, right now, we've got everything that's been proposed. Y'all proposed two officers. I think we're going to be able to get that done. So, I mean, do we want to go down the path of trying to cut something? We can just all, we can all go around. I don't know. I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to go down the list. I don't want to frustrate y'all and say something that y'all care about, just like, I don't like, you know, things that I care about being proposed. So I think we have a really good proposal here, something that we can all support.
Well, I don't think we need to have that discussion unless we have the will of council to see fit to hire the additional two. Otherwise, that would just be a waste of breath if we're talking about what we could cut when the majority doesn't even want the additional two officers.
Well, I don't know if I want, but yeah, yeah, understand.
By cutting elsewhere.
Doesn't want to go to four officers proposed as a set of the two. I understand that. I think Councilmember Tobias has made his thoughts on that. Yeah, I get it.
I understand the lobbyist part. I understand about getting the dollars and advocating for that, I guess. And I understand all departments. I'm not trying to weigh in saying that. This is just a top priority for me because what's, what I do, but it's, it's public safety, and that's the key point. When we have a safe environment, safe city, all of those entail, whether you're dealing with economics, the economic part of our city and the infrastructure, the public safety, in my, my view, is always going to be the top priority. But I understand, and I'm willing to, to listen to everybody on that end.
And I'll just say this, because I got to get this part off my chest. With the lobbyists, I understand, and we've talked about this before, my first year on council, you and I, you brought up the lobbyists. You know, right now, it's, it's a ballpark dollar amount that was given out there. We haven't even account, as a council, seen, you know, what would be the difference that a federal lobbyist and a state lobbyist would be able to bring. I know y'all are doing those interviews and different things like that, but nothing's been brought forward to the council on the advantages of having both kinds of lobbyists, particularly in this first year, what that potentially, what a state lobbyist could bring that a federal lobbyist couldn't do, or what a federal lobbyist could do that a state lobbyist couldn't do. I know there are differences, but have those been explained and understood? That's why I brought up the fact that Lamar Smith, a representative in the state of Texas, is a part of that, that federal lobbyist contingency. But I think that is something, too, that, you know, right now with the 300,000, we're kind of taking a leap of faith on, you know, these two bringing something forward, but we really haven't seen anything concrete about what those, what those differences would be between that. Is that...
Well, yes, you are correct. And nobody has engaged, really at this point, any state lobbyists because we're trying to make sure that the money's in the budget and that the council supports the concept of that. So for, it gets, it gets convoluted when there's a desire from one, you know, from, from a group of the council to add officers or add to the budget, and then there's a proposal to cut from some other, from some other group. And sometimes it's easier to try to separate those things out a little bit, or maybe the better way to say is, is the goal to add officers or is the goal to cut the lobbyist budget? So if the goal is the first, that there's a lot, y'all have made a proposal, we could all make proposals, but, you know, for me, that's just not where I would go. I wouldn't go to that item. I think that there's a lot of opportunity there, but, you know, it just depends. I, you know, if the goal is to do that, then we can have that discussion.
Sure. I guess all I'm saying is that I would like to hear, speaking for myself, what the benefits of a state lobbyist that would bring that a federal lobbyist wouldn't bring right now. We haven't had that clear conversation as a council about that. So that's why the state lobbyist was targeted as far, as a proposal for a potential cut. But the goal is to add officers, and for Chief, we're not micromanaging this, for Chief to figure out how to best utilize that in the overall mission of his department. That is his, his decision to make. But the goal is by far the first thing. We had to try to find an initial area to make a proposal to this council with this budget meeting in mind about where we would start to try to fund that, and this was one of the options that we looked at. It is not, the second half of our goal is to get rid of this second lobbyist or the state lobbyist. That was not the outside of this. The outside was to add positions to our PD.
I actually appreciate the effort when people bring ideas, not necessarily saying this is what we're going to do, but like, hey, this is our idea, and this is how we plan on getting it done. Because a lot of times, some people just say yes or no, and they have no alternative plans. And I think that makes going forward or being progressive a little bit difficult. So I can't understand why they brought the idea of the lobbyist because at that point, we were told that this is all we can afford. And so they were trying to just be proactive. I don't think they mean any malice or any harm.
No, so, so the, you know, we have a city manager who works really hard and listens to all the council. They heard that there was a desire for two additional patrol officers. You know, probably also knew it'd be hard to accomplish that by cutting the lobbyist position, or that it would be, it would create maybe, you know, a split on the council or something along those lines. So they were able to figure out how to do it and accomplish what essentially what everyone wanted, which is the, you know, what every city manager's required to do. So, you know, or to pursue at least. So that's where I feel like, you know, unless we're talking about, let's go for more, and let's, let's add even more, I think the problem is solved, but it's just a matter of whether or not y'all want to go to four now, and then we'll, we'll have to come up with kind of a new, new crack at it.
So maybe if the task force had been apprised of that there's another fund, because I know that, I just found out that they were talking about it. So before the meeting...
There is no police budget task force.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. Right, right. I see what you're saying. But Dex said he has spoken to Scott about it.
Right.
And then, so there was some discussion there prior to, but yet he's just learning that there is an alternative means of funds. And so I think that's why, had that been discussed prior to, then maybe that, we wouldn't even be talking about the lobbyist at all.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it just took some conversations and some heads coming together to figure out a way to not have to cut anything and how we could pay for it without going out there.
Again, yes, I agree. That's probably what happened. But nobody knew about the alternative solution until right now. So, and obviously, that is something that was discussed prior to. So had you reached out to Dex and told him, hey, this is...
I did. Let's, let's put that on the table. We talked about additional revenues. This isn't a new fund. This is additional revenue from court fines. So it's, it's tough, right, just to say that we're going to write more tickets, and that's not what we're saying, right? So we needed to come up with an offsetting revenue for it. Historically, our revenues have been much lower. This is an opportunity to go back to basically pre-COVID times, right? So it's not some sort of quota. It's not anything. It's anticipating what we're moving into. We did have that conversation. So I want to put that out there that we did talk about it.
And I just want to clarify, my understanding of that conversation was to find the delta between to pay for the additional, because I knew we were going to be short even if we cut the lobbyists, to get to the 188,000. So my understanding, and I'm not quarreling or disagreeing with Scott, but my understanding was that additional revenues perhaps proposed were to get the delta between what would be between cutting the state lobbyist position and getting to the rest of the way, the $40,000 to $60,000 we need. So that, so maybe there was an understanding between us, but that's what I thought that conversation was about.
Now, there's a delta, right? We've got two positions and a patrol vehicle to find. So whether that comes out of the lobbyist money, whether it comes out of increased revenues from the court fines, whether it comes out of cutting other items, there's definitely a delta. So we, you know, in further conversations after speaking with Councilmember Ellison, you know, I spoke with the police chief and basically looked at the historical numbers, spoke with Pervez. We feel like the delta can be matched just with the additional police officers that we have.
So then the question is, do we, does this council want to now try to take it to four and cut something, or are we satisfied with where this is?
I would like to get it.
People in public need to hear you. For me, I thought it was going to be hard to find monies for the two, and I'm satisfied getting the two officers. That's what the association relayed to us, that the addition of two officers would really help them dramatically, and I'm good with the two officers. I'm good to move forward. I'm glad that we were able to find those funds.
Would you like to go first?
No, please.
Oh, I was just, I just want the feedback from Chief before, just to hear what his thoughts are.
Then I want to jump in on the more part, because, Scott, you said we're trying to get back to historical revenues, right? We're basing this on historical revenues.
Correct.
Okay. So then with the gap within those historical revenues, should cover the cost of the police officers?
Two.
Two, right. But we're saying at least that.
Correct.
Right. It might be a jump to say four. I don't know what the bridge is there. I don't really care. But I have things I like, too. I like things I want to propose, but I try to keep the budget balanced and understand that this is a long process and everybody's involved. So I also want people to understand that, like, I can come with a bunch of asks, and they're related to the police department and the community. So my ask now, understanding that there is some sort of gap, and Chief, you can shut this down, and it's totally fine, but you know how I feel about the Citizens on Patrol program and what I think that does for the police department with patrolling, the extra efforts, the great volunteers that we have there. I don't think we really have anything in the budget for them, and we've been scraping by. Is there some sort of amount, and it'll be a small amount compared to the two officers, but in addition to that, to figure out a way to add a little bit of funds to help that program, who I think has excelled during COVID and showing their value, add something there to increase the budget for Citizens on Patrol, using that gap that we're discussing?
So I think, I think I can even do better than that. So we were hoping to grow that program. Remember, we started with four?
Okay, so I think I may be able to even do better than that. So remember, we came to council years ago to discuss the program and then implement the program with your permission? We wanted to start small in baby steps, and we wanted to make sure the program was well ran and was well-staffed. We have four outstanding members of Citizens on Patrol. We've seen them perform a variety of services, whether it be weather-related, community-related, support of the PD and such. This year, we were hoping to actually grow that division. I actually think I can do that within our existing budget. I don't think I would even need any additional funds. What I was going to do is come back before you and say, we're asking permission to grow from four to six or eight members and to expand the role of that program. We have a variety of complaints that come in typically that could be handled by such a group, whether it be minor parking complaints, whether it be very small neighborhood complaints, and they're willing to. They want to help. These volunteers are some of the best you will find anywhere, and they're very active in the community. So I can answer your question. I think we can absorb growth in that division and use them in a bigger and better way than we have before, because we were taking baby steps, without any increase in funding. We would just come back before you at a council and get permission to grow the program.
Could I get you, Chief, to, from what I understand it, there's no line item necessarily for that program. Could I get you to put something in a line item so I can see that as we move forward and watch it grow? Because I am very proud of the program that you started with that.
Yes, sir. Absolutely do that.
I actually like that. I'm in, I'm in support of that. I think that would be good to see.
Yeah. I'm in support of that as well, especially because I, I got to witness how important the COP was during the ice storm, during the pandemic. Them being out there, I remember one evening, they were out there all morning and into the afternoon in freezing temperatures directing traffic, and that stays with me. The love that they have for the community as volunteers goes beyond no measure. I mean, they, they were out there, there were cars slipping on the roadways, on the bridges, and they were out there standing in the rain the entire time, directing traffic and getting people through the vaccination clinics. And I just can't say enough about them. I'd love to see us grow that program and in the same gold standard that they are right now. Be great.
Can I also say, anytime we need volunteers, those are the first people we go to, and without hesitation, just tell us when, just tell us where we got to be. So they're an amazing group of people, and they're always up for the task. So I think that's a great investment.
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor pro temp for thinking of that and bringing that forward. I think it's an excellent idea.
Can I say, I think they're all excellent ideas. We may not agree, but I don't want people to get upset over ideas. You know what I mean? We still got to try to see each other's point of view. Travis and I, I didn't initially understand what Travis was saying, but now that I do, I think it was a great idea. We keep the lobbyists, and we find funds for two police officers. So let's not get caught up in the heat and the frustration because I think what we're doing here is unprecedented, and I think we're doing a really great job.
So if I'm hearing enough consensus on that, and I don't know if I am, but if I'm hearing we're moving forward with this plan for the two, we'd have steps on how to get there. So I'm going to look to council at this point to wrap that up and then throw anything else on the table, and then we'll move into...
So does everyone have the sheet, the sheet? So we need to, we're going to, at this point, any changes, they're going to require probably, I'm assuming, council action?
Mayor, we just gave that to you to lead that...
Ah, that makes, I got handed this. So I was like, it makes, all right. Can you throw it up on the screen? This is what everybody needs, needs in order to help understand, I think.
Email would be great.
Yeah, can you shoot that in an email?
I just got handed it. I haven't seen it before.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking to Scott.
Okay, hold on one sec.
So it's a, it's a total change in the budget of $438,000. It's the addition of one deputy city manager position, two patrol officers, one police pursuit vehicle. The planner position is in there and says additional, and there's a blank, so I don't understand, but there's no amount to that. And then the reductions are the deletion of the LGC manager position, the council and architect planner, the, and then the additional fines, citations, and miscellaneous other adjustments. It's balanced. So what it is, is one deputy city manager, two patrol officers, one police pursuit vehicle, and then the planner is in there as a blank. And then the planner is in there as a blank, but that's because it was already added into the budget, but it wasn't in the original. So we'd need action, I guess, to.
Well, yeah, I pulled that out since, Mayor.
What's that?
I pulled that out since. So if you look at the, went on the screen, it doesn't have that planner position.
All right, yeah, okay.
But what it does not include is the $100,000 additional for the senior center. So that would need to be added too, and then the offset would be.
Thank you.
Right. So that's, this is, this is what I think we should, if we're interested in trying to take some kind of action, it would be action on this particular page.
Yeah, so the items in the top would be the items added to the budget. And plus adding the $100,000 for the senior center. And then the items below are items that would be eliminated from the last budget workshop proposal.
What are we going to do about, are we going to fund anything for the citizens on patrol?
That will be within the existing budget.
Okay.
And we get other cracks at this. This just keeps us moving. You know, there's going to be conversations that take place about, you know, deputy ACM, various other things, you know, but as far as saying conceptually, you know, to move this as the, from the, on the outside to the inside, this would be where we would do it.
Certainly. We have two other work sessions after this. So, so we need to give official direction. I agree with Mayor. We need to, we need to have motions on this. So let's, how about we go from top to bottom? Because I would personally like to see, if we're going to move forward and if council agrees, and I guess if not, maybe we could take a motion on adding that deputy slash assistant city manager position. I don't know if we need to have a vote on if we want to add that position first. And then, because I think, where I'm getting at is I think that it should be, instead of a deputy assistant city manager, if we're going to go that route, it should be an ACM. I think James made some very relative comments about the equity across there. And I think that the deputy city manager costs would be more than if it were the city assistant city manager salary and benefits. So there would be a cut there. So first, do we agree with adding the position? Second, should it be a deputy or assistant city manager?
Can I know the difference in the job duties?
A deputy is basically just the lead assistant city manager. So it would be.
He would oversee.
Yeah, oversee the other two.
We should not use names because it's an open position. Anyone can field.
I think he was just trying to give me an idea.
From an organizational standpoint, the deputy ACM would be the lead. ACM chief of staff would be.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, so my take on that is, the whole point of the conversation is, what does Scott feel as a city manager he needs to successfully move the city forward? And so if he wants to go with the deputy assistant city manager as the best possible position to add towards the top of our executives, then I'm in favor of that. If he wants to then say, I would rather do an assistant city manager, I'm in favor of that as well. But that's why I think it's up to him to decide what's best. And that's what we pay him for, for him to be the leader of the staff and understand the needs. And I'm there to support him on whatever that decision is there, as long as we're all in agreement that he does need the help at the top.
Is there a difference in salary between a deputy and just a regular? Okay.
Yeah, I'd say, let me come back to workshop for, with that answer.
Yeah, I think there's more questions that need to be asked before I can make a choice on that. Thank you. But we can move forward with the patrol officers and then the vehicle? Or we're just going to wait to vote it on later?
Well, we'll need a vote today from council. So if you want to do it piecemeal or all together?
Scott, are you saying you do not want us to take a vote on the?
No, I'd like you to take a vote on at least adding this position. We can call it deputy slash assistant at this point, but, you know, if I come back for workshop number four and it's just an ACM, then we'll adjust the budget. I don't have.
Yeah, because I need to get a cost analysis, not like how much the pay disparity would be or the difference.
It was my assumption.
And Scott, anything that we vote on today is not set in stone. We still have to vote on the final budget. So anything that we vote on today can be amended.
Well, I, my thoughts would be to just adopt the whole thing and allow for Scott to continue working. So, you know, there's more conversations to have, but we got to, we got to take something. This is what he proposed.
Okay, so then we would do deputy and/or assistant city manager instead of just deputy?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. If everybody is okay with that.
That works.
Pervez, for clarification, when's the first vote on a proposed effective tax rate? Because once you say that number, then you can only come down from that number, right? So that would be important to know.
So the first reading is at the next budget work session. But they can, council can make amendments all the way till the last budget work session on August 25th.
But once you publicly say a tax rate, you can't increase it after that. You can only.
No, but whatever increases the council makes at that point will have to come from the fund balance or we cut something else equivalent.
I think we should leave all the dollars as are because I do think James's point is relevant. It's easier to reduce if that's the desire. So does everybody now have that page in front of them? Has it been emailed?
I didn't email because it's up on the screen, but I think everyone has seen it.
So. Since there are additions and subtractions, you know, we're, you know, it's hard to do them one item at a time because it's a balanced proposal. So if y'all are okay, I'd like to make a motion on the whole thing. All right, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to amend the proposed budget as outlined on the screen above, a total of 438,000 in new additions, 438,000 in new revenues, and the addition of one deputy city manager position that could be changed, two patrol officers without vehicles, and one police pursuit vehicle.
And Mayor, can you add the $100,000 for the senior center?
I'll do that the next one. That's up there, sorry.
Second.
All right, yeah, it's been moved and seconded. We'll add the senior sitter on the next motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Does somebody want to do the $100,000 from the task force?
A motion to approve.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Ellison. I'll second your motion. Go ahead.
Motion to add additional $100,000 towards the, for city's contribution for this senior center project.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Ellison, second by Councilmember Tobias. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I have discussion. In the previous motion, you added the two police officers that are coming from within that revenue within the police department, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, well, then I would also like to amend this motion to add the line item for the citizens on patrol.
That's fine. But we don't have a, we don't have a dollar amount for citizens on patrol to change the budget with?
No, way more than that.
Well, can we finish this and then do a separate, separate vote? So that's the motion. We have a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. MPT, go ahead.
All right, I make a motion to add a line item to the police budget for $15,000 for citizens on patrol.
Second.
Moved by MPT, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any discussion on that motion? I'm assuming that number just came from Chief.
Yes, sir.
There's back and forth over there.
Yeah, there's, yeah, yeah. It's not me flying off seat of my pants.
And this would come from other additional revenues from the, within the department and cost savings and other things like that within the department, similar to what we've talked about with the other positions. So you're going to find another 15,000?
On top of.
Wow, I don't know where we're finding this thing.
I'd like to see a cost breakdown of that.
We are reallocating existing funds. Then we're good on our budget. We're just going to make it work with what we have. If we're pulling 15,000 from an existing line item and just putting it in a, an identified line item, yeah, that's, that's not going to be it. That's going to be tough because our, that's going to be tough. What I was talking about earlier for no cost or very low cost was having them share a vehicle and whatnot. If we're going to grow, I think there's a good commitment here from the council to maybe do even more than what I was saying. Let's get them a good rental vehicle that they can use and some more equipment that they can use. I was going to do, I was going to do a minimal program with the best that we had. I'm here in that we want to do even bigger and better and more, more towards that gold standard, so.
So, so can we, what number are you comfortable with, Chief? And I will amend the motion, but I want you to go gold standard with the program and really put some oomph behind it.
Before you answer that, if I may, I'm supportive of this idea. I really do like it, and I agree, gold standard on it. I'd like to see maybe some proposals of what you would do with that to kind of see tangibly, you know, if that's adding, you know, vehicle, whatever else that is, to, rather than just kind of, I'm not saying spitballing a number, but.
I can give you a quick breakdown of where that came from. We can lease a vehicle for $11,000 that would be very suitable for our program to use. The other 4,000 would go to buy them, the new members. Remember I mentioned a while ago, I want to grow it six to eight members to get them all uniforms, the newer members' uniforms, to have them attend the annual conference. So it's a variety of pockets where that money would need to go. But we can do that with $4,000 if we grow it to eight members. And the biggest bulk of that is to get them a leased vehicle that's newer. You probably see the vehicle that we have. That's actually a retired vehicle from another city department that had used it to its almost end life. And then we kind of revamped it for a little bit. We brought it back to life for a little while. It's working, but I'm here in gold standard, and we would need to get them a newer leased vehicle. It's about $11,000 a year. And then $4,000 in equipment and training.
Is that $11,000? Like, I guess, what kind of car does that get you?
It would probably be a four-door Chevy or Ford pickup because those, well, no, here's why. Because you think a pickup's cost more when you go to purchase them. However, the leasing company that we use actually gets an outstanding deal because they buy more of them in bulk on the four-door, two-wheel-drive pickups because they buy so many of them from all of their other customers. Those actually come in cheaper than vehicles that you think you might, than other vehicles. So it will probably be that. If not, it'll just be a four-door sedan car. We'll find the most cost-effective but yet effective vehicle for them, so.
And that's an annual lease payment?
Can I get that for me? Because that is a heck of a price.
They have what it is. It also includes their rebates because remember that lease program, those vehicles go back into the program after three years, and that includes their rebate program that we get too, so.
Okay, perfect. Okay, if you can do it, then.
Yeah, I think for 15,000, we can do vehicle and uniforms and training for up to eight members, easy.
I'm glad you're going with, to see you going with Ford, very dependable.
I'm pretty confident that 15,000 all in total is something that we can find those dollars. That's not that much, I mean, compared to what we spend, so. If we want to make sure that this, the COP program expands, we can do that. We can do it at this meeting or at the next. Either one is fine, but.
It's just how we go about, like Chief said, there's, there's one way that it can be found. There's another way that that's impossible to make it work. So I just wanted to clarify that and make sure we're all on the same page with that.
Council will make it happen. I'm sure of it. If we can, if we all want it to happen, I'm sure we can get those dollars. That's kind of all I'm saying.
The lobbyists, they can do that.
Council will. All right, so the motion. What did he say?
He said moving on. We're trying.
So the motion's on the floor.
The motion on the floor is to add $15,000. There's, to, and create a line item, add $15,000 for the COP program. Any further discussion on that motion?
We're just clear on where we're going to find that, right? Okay.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, we, I want to now ask Pervez just to go over some estimates on the tax rate. And then we'll, we'll then dip into, can we do that under item two? Or should we just keep doing that under item one? Okay, so Mayor, if you want to. That all, that all was part of the mayor's motion, so we're set there. Mayor, if you want to move us to item two, and then Pervez will have a conversation about that.
So Mayor and council, for the record, I'm Pervez Moyes, City's Director of Finance. The second item on the agenda before you today is a resolution to record your vote that you're willing to consider a proposal at a future council meeting of a tax increase. And please be patient. I'll explain what that means. It's really not a tax increase, sort of. The tax code or the state statutes require council to record their vote that they're willing to consider a proposal whereby the no new revenue tax rate and the tax approval tax rate, these are the old effective tax rate and the rollback tax rate. Whichever is lower, that if your proposed tax rate is higher than one of those two lower rates, you must have this vote, that you will consider that. So with that as a backdrop, let me go over the tax. So before you, on the slide, we have the certified tax roll that we received from the Hayes County appraisal district for fiscal year '22, or for them, it's tax year 2021 because the tax bills go out in October of this year. So 2021 certified tax roll is $4.2 billion for Kyle. This includes the certified tax appraised value for both of our TERZs, one and two. The same value last year was $3.7 billion. So we have increased by $522 million or 14%. But when you look at individually, the city by itself and the two TERZs, the percent is a little different. So city, if you carve out the TERZ one and two, the city's AV increased by about 12.5%. But when you throw in the both TERZs, it's 14%. Any questions on the certified tax roll?
You said before you throw in the TERZs, it's what?
12.5% from the year before. So this next slide is, shows the different tax rates we have to deal with. And we staff can calculate our own tax rates, but it does not count. It has to be certified by the Hayes County Tax Appraiser Collector. That's the official tax rates we can adopt once that she goes through that process and provides us that information. That will not be available to us perhaps until the next work session because the Hayes County Tax Assessor Collector has to certify or calculate and certify the tax rates for all taxing jurisdictions. all taxing jurisdictions within Hayes County. So we're all in queue waiting to receive our tax rates. However, we have done our own calculations, what the tax rates may look like. So you see a lot of yellows here, a lot of disclaimers here, a lot of estimates here, a lot of subject to change here, so please be mindful, this is for discussion purposes only. So on the left side is the two components of our property tax rates. Maintenance and operations, also commonly referred to as MNO rate. And then the second component, which makes up the property tax rate, is interest and sinking or INS rate. Maintenance and operation rate covers for the day-to-day operations of the city government that comes from property tax such as police, libraries, streets, those types of activities. Interest and sinking is used, those revenues are used to pay our debt service, principal and interest on our debt service that is to be paid from property taxes. Some of our debt service is paid from utility funds, some of it is paid from TERS, but most of it is paid from property tax. So if you look at the second column, our current tax rate today is 52.01 cents per $100. The second column is the no new revenue tax rate. This is a, just a new branding by the state for the, what we commonly were aware of or known as the effective tax rate. And if you recall, what effective tax rate means is basically at what tax rate will the city generate the same amount of money that it did the year before? So for us to have a no new revenue tax rate with the new certified tax roll, we would have to keep that tax rate at 47.89 cents. Now, this is just a preliminary estimate. It might change when the tax assessor calculates their own. In the past, we've been within one ten-thousandth of a penny, so it may change. Voter approval tax rate, which used to be the rollback rate, is calculated at 50.66 cents based on the certified tax roll. Here again, these are estimates, might change. The tax law, the, the resolution that you're about to vote on, the tax law requires that if the no new revenue rate or the voter approval tax rate, if the city's proposed tax rate is higher than the lower of these two, then you must take a vote. It is very likely that our city's proposed tax rate will be higher than the no new revenue rate but lower than the voter approval rate. There's, I would not recommend, I don't believe the city manager is going to recommend that you adopt a tax rate that is above the voter approval tax rate because you will, by new law, have to get the voters of Kyle to approve that, anything above the voter approval tax rate. So the revenues that is projected in the general fund proposed budget is based on our estimate of 50.66 cents tax rate for next year. So you're basically, by adopting the resolution, you're basically saying that at a future council meeting, we're willing, or not willing, whichever way you want to vote, to adopt a tax rate that might be higher than the new revenue tax rate because that's the lower of the two. Any questions on that? I know it's a little intense, but that's what you're voting on. You're not adopting a tax rate. You're only voting on that you're willing or not willing to consider a proposal at a future council meeting.
So what I'm hearing, Prevz, is that we're adopting a new tax rate and these numbers are going to be within one ten-thousandth of a point of the reality, right?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay, maybe I misunderstood. My, my only question is the, 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 the GEO bonds that we issued, how does that play into, does that, does that play into, because the, the INS rate is going down, and I would have thought the INS rate would go up with the addition of the proposed GEO bonds for the Public Safety Center.
So mayor, you'll recall from the, the prior work sessions, one of our mission and goal was to defer that tax rate as increase as far as we could, possibly could. So the plan for next year is that the tax rate impact for the $37 million public safety facility and the $10 million bond that the citizens approved for the parks, a total of 47 million, that the debt service on that, we are able to defer until fiscal year '23.
And the 5065 is below the rollback?
Yes, sir. The rollback is 5066. So we're proposing that if the rollback comes in at 5066, that our proposed tax rate be 5065.
You're just saying for now to set the maximum to not exceed the rollback?
We're not asking you to set anything today, sir.
We have to take some kind of vote, is what it sounds like. So I'm just trying to figure out, is it not a not to exceed amount? That's normally the way we do it though, right?
If, if you like, but I, I honestly do not know what the actual rollback tax rate will be.
So what is, what is the motion that you're looking for?
That you would consider a tax rate that is higher than the no revenue tax rate but lower than the voter approval tax rate.
And you need that in a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consideration of a tax rate that exceeds the no new revenue tax rate, but that does not exceed the rollback tax rate.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there discussion on that?
And mayor, we need a roll call vote on this.
Okay, roll call vote.
Who's this microphone? Coach?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Floris Cale?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Tobias?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we not have an executive session? I thought we did this one. All right, motion to adjourn.
Well, real quick before we do though, can I just ask that next budget session, we get a little bit more definitive what the difference in what services and opportunities we will get between the federal lobbyists and the state lobbyists? I know y'all are still working out those things, but I think it would be helpful for the council to kind of understand what the benefits and services and options we get between those two things. And then secondly, I know we've received some invoices for the lights on, for the Christmas festival and whatnot. Have we expended any of those dollars yet on that?
So for the Christmas display decorations, all the tree wrapping and the center street decorations, all the vendors have received the purchase orders. I do not believe that anything has been paid yet.
Okay, so let me just, the reason I bring this up is because if the dollars are expended from that, then that would, that, this was the, the end of the last work session question, and I didn't get a, a answer on it till afterwards. If those dollars are expended before this fiscal year is up, then that would not need to roll over to next fiscal year budget, correct, staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was asking at the end of the meeting last time. And so that's where that cost would come down. So if we can expend any of those, those dollars to pay those invoices, would we not have some additional funds that would come out, come free because of that? Not quite. If the, let's say, for example, I don't know the real numbers, but for discussion purposes, let's say the PO is $100,000, and this fiscal year they only spend 30, so the remaining 70,000 for that PO will roll over for next year is when they actually pay. Right. If they paid all 100,000 this year, there's nothing to roll over. But if the project is complete, they only spent 70,000 of the 100, then the 30,000 becomes available.
Right, so that dollar amount changes, right? So if, if it's a.
The carry amount over.
I just wanted to point out, councilmember, that we also withhold payment typically till the project is complete. That way, if it's not complete to our satisfaction, we can withhold payment.
So, but the, the thing, I think the thing to keep in mind is that if you spend 100,000 or 200,000 out of general fund in one, one year, that the money is, is, is spent, and we amended the last year's, or the current year's budget for it. So I don't think it would be appropriate to say that we have an additional 200,000 because of next year's budget, or because we spent it in one year.
It wouldn't be 200,000, it'd be a portion of 200,000.
The only portion that would be available to be reused, which is kind of where Councilmember Rizzo was talking about, the 45,000 potentially for fireworks, is if it's not expended at all. But regardless of which fiscal year it comes in, if we're planning to spend it, which year we spend it in doesn't matter for, you, you can't take the, you can't take an amount because we spent it in one year and then make it available in the following year.
So I'm turning to Scott now. So just round numbers. So you have $100,000 that we, 100, we'll just say 100,000, that's not the right number, but $100,000 that we amended this year's budget for, and we're also putting it in next year's budget. But we are able to expend 30,000 of that before this fiscal year is up, paying on some of those things, keeping in mind that we don't pay the full thing because of Jerry's point. Then would that not change the budget line item to $70,000 for the next fiscal year because 30,000 of that is spent, or you still would keep that at $100,000 even though 30,000 was spent before this fiscal year was up with the amended budget? Does that question make sense?
It depend, excuse me, the answer is always it depends, right? So it really depends on when the budget is adopted. So if the council would like us to, by the time the budget is approved, to reduce that line item in the future year's budget to account for what we've already expended in the POs, then we can do that.
That's exactly what I've been asking, yes. Thank you.
Can I also make a request that whatever one council member gets or whatever one person gets, that it's passed out? Mostly because I'm a paper girl and I like to write on it and take notes. And so I know there was a couple of things that weren't printed out and, and given to us. If we could have that at the next meeting, anything that you guys show on the screen, I would be really grateful.
Good.
Thank you.
Our motion to adjourn.
Second.